To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Grandquist.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Dahlketter.
Here.
Muren. Jackson.
Here.
House.
Here.
Kyle.
Here.
With that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, motion in second. If no discussion on that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
I'd look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. No discussion. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, that moves us to item number seventeen on your council agenda, public hearings and related action. I will open this public hearing to comply with the provisions of NRS eighteen dash seventeen fifty-five concerning the acquisition of permanent and temporary easements located in parts of lots one, two, three, four, and five of George Reeves Jr., second addition to the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska. And to kick off the discussion on this, I will turn it over to Steve Remus, our city engineer.
Mr. Mayor, council members, for the past several years, we've been working on various projects around the community to expand our trails projects. A couple of those over along First Street and the Johnson Park area. We started working on those back in summer of 2015 and had several contacts with the Millers during that timeframe, from about summer of 2015 to fall of 2017, about nine separate contacts, in an effort to negotiate temporary and permanent easements for the trail project along the, beyond the west side of First Street, south of the railroad tracks. It had run from First Street over to the river there. During that process, we were engaged with Midstates right-of-way, and they provided the easement, the appraisals, property appraisals and the easement documents, and also worked with us in terms of those contacts to negotiate a settlement with the Millers to, for those easements. There was two easements, or two offers, or negotiated offers that were made prior to September of this year. Both of those offers were rejected in both cases. Our appraiser team and our land agent team worked to try and negotiate with the landowner. Seeing that we were at an impasse, we updated our easement documents. They had reached a point where they were over a year old, and so we needed to get a reappraisal on the properties before we made a final offer to them. That final offer was sent out in January of 2018, and again, that offer was also rejected. So, reaching an impasse with the owners, we come to the point of, to move the project forward, we would need to go to eminent domain proceedings.
Thank you, Steve. Questions, comments for Steve on that? This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment now can do so. Basically, to reiterate, Steve, this was almost a two-year process, seeking to acquire the easement on this property. Nine separate contacts made with the property owners. I think we had six other property owners that we secured easements.
That is correct.
On this project without any complication.
That is correct.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If no one else wants to make comment at this time, I will close discussion and close the hearing and move to item number eighteen. For motion to consider authorization for the city attorney to proceed with eminent domain to obtain necessary easements on parts of lots one, two, three, four, and five of George Reeves Jr., second addition to the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, for the Johnson Park Connector Trail Project, as Midwest Right-of-Way Services determine that the city of Norfolk and the affected property owner are at an impasse.
I'll make the motion.
Second that, Your Honor.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion, comments on this council? Barely straightforward. All right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, that moves us to item number nineteen. I will open this public hearing to consider an amendment to the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, as authorized by section sixteen dash nine oh two RRS two thousand twelve. Val, would you please pick up the discussion for us on this?
Yes, thank you. This is here before you tonight because when we annex land, which we did this last year with Metalman's Lake and Fountain Point, our extraterritorial jurisdiction boundary line does not automatically move out. So, this is the next step to amend our ETJ line. Before you tonight is six hundred and eighty acres to the west because of Fountain Point's annexation, and twenty-four hundred acres to the south because of Metalman's Lake. You can see, if you're looking at the exhibit, the arcs there are actually our two miles, but years ago, to hopefully try to not split somebody's property in half or go down somebody's middle of their house, we only take in, if it's a full quarter-quarter section, forty acres. And so, that's why our jurisdiction line is jagged like that in straight lines.
Okay, thanks, Val. Some questions? So, southward and westward expansions due to annexation. This is a public hearing. If anyone wishes to make comment, they can do so now. Seeing none, I will close the discussion. Ask for a planning commission report. Please vote.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on March sixth, 2018, to amend the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction map of the city as authorized by state statute section sixteen nine oh two. The planning commission recommends approval on an eight to zero vote.
Okay, I will close the hearing and move to item number twenty. Look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five twenty-seven approving an amendment to the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction map of the city of Norfolk, as authorized by section sixteen dash nine oh two RRS two thousand twelve.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance fifty-five twenty-seven on first reading.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion?
I guess, Your Honor, it's, you know, we customarily have done this, and again, I was present when we decided to do it on quarter-section lines so that it was easily definable that way. So, I think this is a good move, and again, it allows us a two-mile zoning jurisdiction, allows us to plan for the future growth of the city and thus controls zoning and development in those areas.
Well stated, councilman. Any other discussion? Okay. If not, short title, please vote.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-five twenty-seven carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance fifty-five twenty-seven on second and third.
Second.
Okay, motion second to suspend the rules. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-five twenty-seven carries on second and third.
Okay, item number twenty-one. We'll open a public hearing at the request of Three Gs Incorporated to consider zoning change from I-two heavy industrial district to I-one light industrial district on property addressed as ten twelve West Monroe Avenue. And Val, can you bring us up to date on this, please?
Yes, this zoning change application is Jerry's trailers there on Monroe, those two pieces of property there that they own. They're requesting I-one down from I-two. It's a large industrial tract down there that has I-one, I-three, and I-two in there. Because currently, they cannot do retail sales out of I-two zoning, but they can do that in I-one. And then, it allows them to do some cleanup work of trailers that are there that really aren't for sale anymore. And I believe the applicants are here tonight, too, if you have questions for them.
Thanks, Val. Any questions on this, council? For background, it's a public hearing. If anyone wishes to make comment, they can do so now.
The gentleman are here. So, are you part of Jerry's trailers now, or?
Yes.
Okay, so you bought the land, or you're going to work on the land?
Gary, if you have a question, can you come up to the podium, please? If we can have you state your name and sign the sheet there in front of you, please.
Okay, my name's Brad Glazer, and my brother and myself own the building and the property it's on. It's called Three Gs. But we're also partial owners of Jerry's trailers and campers. My dad's not here tonight, but we have campers that are over there that our intentions is selling them, but the zoning is such now, it's I-two, and we weren't aware of that zoning that you can't actually do retail sales over there. And we want to clean up the campers that are over there and sell them kind of as-is. Our lot's so full right now that we have no room to bring them over to sell them. So, we were hoping we could sell them from that location and then start doing the cleanup process, because technically, reading the regulations for the zoning, we probably can't even do any dismantling of them over there if we wanted to, you know, salvage parts and then just sell the rest for scrap iron. So, our hope is to change it from I-two to I-one. So, if we had customers that wanted to buy them as-is, we could just sell them from that location.
So, this will allow you to do retail sales on all of your property, then?
Yes, that'd be correct. Did that answer your questions at all?
Yeah.
Okay.
Before you leave, Brad, I guess that's been one of the concerns of what I've heard down in the areas, Kate, because they asked, they have asked, and I said, well, it's reduction in density, and so, that's somewhat of a good thing that way. And they said, well, will it assist in helping getting it cleaned up?
We've had some problems in that area with theft, especially like copper and battery and LP tanks. They've even broke into the interior, and some of them have stole out microwave ovens. I mean, anything that's really not strapped down has been stolen. But it was amazing to me how many things, they've actually cut the copper lines and the wiring, and just remove it for the copper part of it. And I know they've tried to run the police through there more frequently, but it's an ongoing problem I'm sure everyone's dealing with, so. And we've had the hailstorm that came through there several years ago, and it busted a lot of the windows, so we're just going to try to salvage them out. Somebody wants to buy them for like a flatbed trailer, you know, any of the refrigerators that are still good, we're going to take those out, or the appliances that are still functioning, take them out and store them in our building. And then, the rest of the trailer body can go either for salvage, or, you know, if somebody wants it for a utility trailer or flatbed to make their own, that's our intentions anyhow.
Okay. Well, that was their concern, because they didn't want to become more lenient, and I believe with the zoning, we've become actually more stringent that way and more deliberate. And so, that in the long run should help with the entire area down there.
Right.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Seeing none, no close discussion, and ask for planning commission reports?
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on March sixth, 2018, at the request of Three Gs, Inc., to consider a zoning change from I-two heavy industrial to I-one light industrial at ten twelve Monroe Avenue. The planning commission recommends approval on an eight to zero vote.
Okay, with that, I will close the hearing and move to item number twenty-two. Look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five twenty-eight approving a zoning change from I-two to I-one on property addressed as ten twelve West Monroe Avenue.
I'd offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-five twenty-eight.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Further discussion? Questions, comments, council? If you've done, short title, please vote.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-five twenty-eight carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I've moved that we suspend the rules and pass this ordinance on second and third reading.
Second.
Motion in second to suspend the rules. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-five twenty-eight carries on second and third.
Okay, item number twenty-three. I will open this public hearing at the request of Marlin &amp; Pearl Magdeffrau to consider a zoning change from I-one light industrial district to R-two one and two family residential district on property addressed as fourteen eleven South Second Street. And Val, could you kick us off here, please?
Yes, this piece of property is, I'm going to describe it as catty corner to the northeast from the depot. So, it is the middle house of three houses along Second Street that is zoned I-one. And above those three houses is zoned R-two. And the applicants are here, but the way I understand it is, when the depot public hearing went out, they were within three hundred feet, and so, they looked at their own property and realized that they were non-conforming also in I-one, and then came in asking for a zone change for their house property to become R-two from I-one.
Okay. Thanks, Val. Questions for Val on that? I understand the owners are here tonight. Do you folks wish to make comment? Evening, folks. Thanks for being here. That, the property near you is still being considered for a zoning change. So, I think, as Val said, you were notified of that because you live within three hundred feet of the property in question. And so, you've had discussions with staff on making requests to change the zoning on your residence, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And you wish to do that? You wish to change from industrial to residential?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And your reasons for doing so at this time? Yeah, I'm not sure that anything has changed recently. I think, as I stated before, there's been a request for a change in the neighborhood, so to speak, from industrial zoning designation to a residential one. And so, you got notice of that, which I think prompted you to look at your own designation, which is industrial, which I think has been zoned as industrial for some time. And now, as we understand it, you're seeking to change that zoning to residential. So, we'll decide on that here tonight, if you want us to move forward with making that decision.
So, I'd like to.
Okay, okay. Very good. All right. You have any questions?
One question. Is there, are you looking at doing some remodeling or something else that's driving you?
I don't really know. I couldn't add on to my house anymore with this R-two bit.
With the industrial, you mean? Okay.
But my utilities yet, I can put back up again, because that's going to go right back on concrete slab, etc.
Are you planning on doing something or not, or, I guess I wasn't real sure what, other than the public notice, what brought you to the table here, so?
Val, maybe you can help us out. If there were to be a fire at the house, and there was a desire to reconstruct, remodel, would the couple be able to do so under the current zoning? Or would they need the residential zoning to be able to do that?
If something happens over that fifty percent, being non-conforming as they are right now, they would not be able to rebuild.
That's understandable.
Yep, and he's correct that, as it stands right now, he would not be able to add square footage to the house, being non-conforming, if he wanted to expand his house. And in answer to, I can at least go back to nineteen sixty-three, because I have a zoning map in my office from nineteen sixty-three, and your house was zoned light industrial in nineteen sixty-three also. So, it hasn't changed, at least in that time period.
So, for purposes of potential expansion, or if you would need to reconstruct the house in case of a fire, some other disaster, then you would be able to under residential, whereas you couldn't under industrial?
I understand that fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay, okay, okay. All right. Well, thank you, folks. Appreciate you being here. Any questions for the Magdeffraus? Did I say your name right? Magdeffrau? Is that right?
Magdeffrau.
Magdeffrau, Magdeffrau, Magdeffrau. Okay.
So, when will we know for sure?
Potentially in a couple minutes.
Oh.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you, folks. This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to comment can do so now. Seeing no one, planning commission report, please vote.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on March sixth, 2018, at the request of Marlin &amp; Pearl Magdeffrau to consider a zoning change from I-one light industrial to R-two one and two family residential at fourteen eleven South Second Street. The planning commission recommends denial of the request on an eight to zero vote.
Okay, with that, I will close the hearing and move to item number twenty-four. Look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five twenty-nine approving a zoning change from I-one to R-two on property addressed as fourteen eleven South Second Street.
All of our consideration, number fifty-five twenty-nine?
Second.
Okay, motion in second. Any further discussion on this, or questions or comments, council?
I was wondering, Val, can you explain the commission's vote, or what their thoughts were on this?
One person thought, said they thought it was spot zoning, and it would have been easier to approve it if the house to the north of them and the house to the south of them were also asking for the residential designation out of industrial. But them being right in the middle, it would be R-two, a lot of I-one, a lot of R-two, and then a lot of I-one, so.
Surrounding properties currently are residential?
To the north of them is residential, once you get past their northern neighbor. So, kind of the northern half of the blocks is, like on Second Street and Third Street, is R-two, but the south half of the lots are I-one.
I mean, but technically, next to them are their houses there.
Yes.
Okay. They're not zoned residential, but they're, they are.
They're being used as residential. They're not zoned as residential, yep.
Would it, would it not make more sense to change that area north of Northwestern to a mixed use or an R-two, to take care of all of those rather than one at a time?
I believe you, as a city, can change the zoning on people's lots without the request coming from the lot owners, yes.
I think that's a fair question, councilman. I think there's been some discussion on that in this area. I guess my view, and I'm open to other opinions on this, is the property owner came forward for peace of mind, essentially, in the time being, to be moved from an industrial use, which they've not, has not been the use for decades, to rental. So, I think that, even if this were approved, I think that discussion needs to continue about a potential mixed-use designation in this area. But open to other thoughts?
Well, I understand where you're coming from on that, but I think it's simpler and cleaner if it occurs as Councilman Grandquist is suggesting in lieu of what's before us at this point in time. And with no, you know, yeah, it's a sense of peace of mind and that, but with no imminent action required by the Magdeffraus on their piece of property right now, you know, no imminent construction or anything that's pending to occur here, that it would probably behoove us to not pass this and to look at a potential, as Councilman Grandquist suggested, for a much grander, grander scale there, because, again, it would facilitate that being put together much cleaner that way.
I would tend to agree with Councilman Langy that there's more area that we need to look at down there that, that falls into this. And, and we should consider a little larger view than we're currently doing.
Does it do anything for us tonight? And I'm just asking, if we pass this on first reading, and then do what you guys are saying, maybe look at a bigger scope, and then have them catch up? Or does it hurt us if we take a step and then wait for the rest of the crowd to come along? It's the only thing I would say.
That's a good, probably a good question for Val. If we were to take a look at doing something larger in that area down there, if we passed it on first, we'd have essentially five weeks to take a look at a little grander scale. And I'm not so sure that, well, your, your opinion would help on whether that would be enough time to, to take a reasonable look at that.
We could maybe at least talk to the, the two property owners to the north and south of them and clean up that block. Ray Klossen seems to own the one to the south, according to G.I.S., and Joan Van Egman owns the one to the, the north, it looks like. I mean, if you want to pass it on first and let me see if I can get ahold of these people and see if they want to do that and get back with you. And then you can do something on second and third.
So how does it affect us if we, if we deny it? Can we bring the whole lot, everything back in as one group within a shorter timeframe than the, than the six months or not? I mean, because we're looking at all the properties and in lieu of just a singular property?
That's a good question for Clint, because we have that six-month waiting period, so I don't know.
I don't think there's anything in the, in the city code says, if it's denied, you can't bring an application for the same property. It doesn't distinguish whether that's being brought by the city, which would be, you know, I think Val could identify lots of properties that are not being used the same way that they're zoned. And so there's quite a discussion, I think, that you could have about whether that's a business you want to get into or not. So I, I think that you maybe keep more of the balls in the air by simply passing it on a first reading, or by tabling it either one, which keeps that application alive. And if Val has success, as she talks, in visiting with some other folks, that could be brought along and, and catch up with it. So I, I think you preserve options by, by either tabling it or, or passing it on first reading.
Thank you.
I think also in doing that, it preserves the option, should there, God forbid, be some accident or fire there in the meantime, that the, the couple would have, would be on track anyway to have the option of rebuilding there. So I think, I think that's a sensible arrangement. That Councilman, fast forward. Any other questions or discussion on that? Okay. Seeing none. Short title, please Beth.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present, voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5529 carries on first reading.
Okay, that moves us to item number 25. We'll open this public hearing at the request of Vanderlay Investments LLC for a final plan development on property addressed as 211 West Northwestern Avenue. And I will note that this week we did receive a request in writing from the developer that any items pertaining to this development be tabled until a full council is present. I see the developers here tonight. Any, any comment you wish to make on that, besides, besides the letter you submitted? Okay.
Your Honor, I was questioning why this is preceding the, proceeding the third reading of the, of the
Zoning.
Zoning change, due to the fact that this, this item would not be pertinent if the zoning change didn't occur. And so.
Fair question, can we?
You can leave that up if you want. The only reason it's under regular agenda is because it's not a public hearing anymore on the ordinance 5522, so it automatically moves to the regular agenda. But you can certainly consider out of order and before the public hearing, if you want.
Because I, you know, I, I think the, the consideration of, of the, of that necessarily needs to follow the zoning change.
Yeah, yeah, procedurally, I think that's correct. So Beth, we, we can suspend this. Here you move to item number 30 to move that.
Right, you can move item 30 up before that and just go on with it.
Okay. Need a motion to do so?
No, you can just do it.
Okay, all right. Well, given Councilman Langy's point, we will move item number 30 up on the agenda and take that up as a body right now. So I would look for consideration of ordinance number 5522 approving a zoning change from I-2 Heavy Industrial District to R3 Multiple Family Residential, Residential District on property addressed as 211 West Northwestern Avenue. Ordinance number 5522 passed on first reading at the February 20th council meeting and on second reading at the March 5th council meeting.
Your Honor, I move consideration of the ordinance on third reading.
Second.
Okay. And I, again, will note that we have a request in writing by the developer to table this discussion on the zoning change, on third reading of the zoning change until a full council, a full body of the council is present. So if there is anyone wishing to make a motion to table in that regard, they can do so.
I'll make a motion to table, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion to table and a second. Any discussion on that?
Your Honor, I guess I question why we're tabling it, because it's, on, for no discussion anyway on it. So I, you know, it's a third reading, so I guess I, I would not support a table on it.
I think the reason, though, that he's doing it, he's already seen two votes, and the one councilman that's missing is one of his favorable council. So that's probably why he's asking to table. Because he's missing a yes vote from the first two times, so.
Okay, Councilmen, I've been informed by Beth. Technically, we are on third reading, part of this debate, we're on third reading, so technically there is no discussion. So we will have to ask for your vote on the table, on the motion to table. Yes or no on that? Moving to table would bring the discussion and the decision on third reading to the next meeting or a meeting when all council is present and able to vote on the issue. So with that, I would ask for your vote. I'm a motion to table.
Motion to table. Council members voting in the affirmative, Dahlke, Meryl. Where am I at? Grandquist. Meryl Dahlke, Faust File, voting against the motion. Langy and Jackson. Motion to table carries.
Okay. That moves us back to item number 25, the public hearing at the request of Vanderlay for final plan development on property addresses 211 West Northwestern Avenue. Okay, and. All right. Any further questions, comments on that? Given the last vote, Council? Okay, I will close the public hearing and move to item number 26. Now, Beth, clarification on that? We, given the table on the zoning change, we move into this discussion?
No, you go ahead and ask for a motion to table. I presume that's what they want.
Okay, okay. Given the previous vote, would ask for consideration of motion to table ordinance number 5530, approving the final plan development for Norfolk Junction located at 211 West Northwestern Avenue?
Still move?
Second.
Okay, motion second to table, ordinance number 5530. Any discussion on that, Council?
No.
Now please vote.
All council members present, voting in the affirmative. Motion to table carries.
Item number 27. We'll open this public hearing to consider the 13th and Omaha Redevelopment Area Plan. And Andy, would you please kick this off?
Sure, Mayor, thank you. Well, this is the final step for the southeast corner of 13th and Omaha Redevelopment Plan. Again, just to refresh everyone's memory, this is for the redevelopment of that area just south of Perkins Restaurant for a new hotel. It will be a pretty significant enhancement for that area. I think we've been hoping something would come in there and try to redevelop that, that area into something that would provide a benefit to the community, as well as increase the tax base for that area too, since it's really lacking and I think we could really use some, some development. I don't, I don't see the developer here this evening. This has been reviewed by the Planning Commission and the Community Development Agency, and both have recommended approval of this plan. The next step from this would be to, back to the Community Development Agency for a redevelopment agreement, which would spell out the terms of the TIF distribution and approve that, that contract with, with the agency. This is a pretty straightforward plan. It's going to improve, it's going to include some infrastructure enhancements, access enhancements around that area as well. It's providing a need for, for hotel rooms in the community as well. There'll be a mixture of both extended stay and regular hotel rooms. So I think it'd be a pretty good balanced addition to the community. I do know our Visitors Bureau has extended their support for this project as well to happen. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that we're able to, between Randy and I, and the next time anything would come forth to the, to the agency for the redevelopment contract.
Okay, Andy, any questions? Another step moving forward to promote development on, it's been some pretty underdeveloped property for some time. So I think a positive thing for everybody. This is a public hearing. If anyone wishes to make a comment, they can do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the hearing and move to item, item number 28 and look for a motion to consider resolution number 2018-13 approving the 13th and Omaha Redevelopment Area Plan.
I'd offer for consideration, resolution 2018-13?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on this? Not, please vote.
All council members present, voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2018-13 is adopted.
Okay, that moves us to our regular agenda. Item number 29, would look for a motion to consider approval of award of contract to Capital Tower and Communications Incorporated for the construction of a new communications tower.
Your Honor, I move consideration of awarding the contract.
Okay. Lyle, welcome to the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What you have before you tonight is the next step in the radio communication tower construction project. We had a bid opening. There's also a bid tab in your, in your attachment there of construction of the tower. Had four applicants that committed proposals. We used our specialist telecommunications services consulting group out of Oklahoma, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. They evaluated, they helped us with the RFP. They made some clarifications with all of the, excuse me, made some clarifications with all of the submitters. Came up with the, the best product for us, which happens to be the lowest as well. And that's the agreement you see. It's also a little Nebraska company. What do you have for questions about it?
So Lyle, the contract that this covers is for the erection of the new tower. It does not cover demolition of the existing tank?
That's, that's exactly right. What, what this will be would be the tower, a fence around it, some electrical work, some, everything so that when the radio communication system is ready to go, it can be put in place. The demolition of the water tower is not involved with this. It'll be a separate deal.
So that being said, and I was remiss in popping back into last year or into this year's budget, how does, how do the dollar numbers correspond to percentage-wise? Or what, what's it leave us to take down the old tower? Do we just have to implode it and let it fall over?
Push it over. No. A breakdown of our budgeting so far, since this is such a large project and a lot of moving parts, based on the decisions that, of whether we continue with our current system or go with the statewide radio system, has been very challenging to estimate the costs. Luckily with this one, we budgeted $230,000 for, $230,000 for this component of it. So it was, in my opinion, very, very close to what we were expecting. The next ones, with the radio system, there is a separate item, separate items for all the divisions, separate items for everybody across the city. The demolition of the water tower is not something that I've necessarily put a pencil to yet, because we want to make sure that the new system is up and functioning 100%. So when we flip the switch from the old system to the new system, where we, it is, happens seamlessly, and there is no blackout where public safety, public works, and that it's, ideally, it's going to transition immediately. Once we know that that system is working appropriately, and has been for a set amount of time, then we can get a little bit more serious about decommissioning the current water tower.
And I guess that's, that's what I was getting at, is one, that construction cycle, I'm assuming is going to take longer than our budget year?
Yes. That, well, the construction of the tower will possibly, the radio system, hopefully it will be up in this, this year.
Before October?
Right, hopefully. Cross my fingers. And the, the timing of it is working out quite well in the fact that we got proposals, a draft document for the radio system to review. We just got it. We haven't got too far into it yet. But if there were budgetary shortfalls that we came across up till this point, we can consider them in our, as we go through the budget process this time, to, to fill any gaps that we may have.
Councilman, you talked about the demolition of the existing water tower. I believe that's, 2025-30 for this year. How we're going to push talk till next year? And once the tower is up and how pretty completely got any issues, that's when the other tower will be taken, be taken down?
That's, that's what I was hoping we were going to do. I really, and I was pretty sure that that was.
So that is the number apparently I don't.
But, but once it's totally functional, no issues, that's when we get that bid out, get that taken down, that tower?
Other questions?
And Lyle, this is on the east or west side of 25th, with the water towers on the east side right now. I know I asked this question months ago. You know, I thought we should put it in the same place, but I think there's reasons we're putting it on the west side.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right. For the, the folks that are new to the conversation, it's about the 400 block in North 25th Street, directly, pretty close, being directly to the west of the current water tower. Having it on the same site is, was a potential, but the geographic location to the west, with the natural gas fiber in close proximity, it was more ideal across the street. it was more ideal across the street, to the west. What else?
Are there other people besides the city of Norfolk utilizing that tower, and are they gonna move with us?
That's a good question too. Yes, there are other four private entities on the water tower right now, that pay a lease arrangement to the city. When we do get that new tower up, and get the prime spots for functioning the public works, public safety locations in those towers, the rest of it will be potentially, if you want it to be, available for lease, additional revenue source. So yes, right now there is folks on the water tower, and yes, they will be invited to be a part of the new tower if they like, and perhaps more, perhaps a bigger revenue source as well.
Will that be at their expense, or will it be...
No, it'll, that'll be their expense. It'd be, just like if you, if you were going to move into a new place, it's your expense to move into that property. Anything else?
Very good. Next one.
Rod Wilkie, twenty-four oh-one Hardison Drive. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time. Counsel, I'm not here certainly opposed to, I realize I had spoken with the mayor earlier about asking some questions of the counsel regarding what we're just addressing right now. I'm not opposed to the, to the bid process and voting on that. But I did have some questions relative, still, to the placement of this new communication tower. And as I looked at your budget last year, you approved, as a counsel, you approved a budget that had that tower located at Twenty-Fifth Street and Prospect Avenue. That was in the, as approved. On November twenty of last year, two thousand seventeen, this counsel approved a new location. And my question regarding that is, is when and where did the counsel give public notification of an address change for the placement of the tower?
Fair question, can we step back in time a little bit and talk about the process of that? I don't know who, who wanted to address that. Shane?
I couldn't find anything in record.
I can, I can address that, Mayor and Council. Twenty-fifth and Prospect was an area location that was submitted into the budget, you know, an area location of that existing water tower, the Twenty-Fifth and Prospect. We didn't give an exact address, with just the area of where it was going to go. Obviously, we own ground, we owns the ground on both sides of Twenty-Fifth Street, so there was no need for a specific address, we own the ground on both sides of Twenty-Fifth and Prospect area, that was in the budget.
Okay, I would, I would recognize as a, as a citizen of the community that that is an area, but the area of Twenty-Fifth and Prospect, and the area in which the water tower currently stands, and what I call the mound, is designated as conditional use permit area on the east side of Twenty-Fifth. The west side of Twenty-Fifth Street is R-one. And by current zoning regulations, how can the city erect a structure like this in the middle of a prime, and its prime, R-one district? So where did that approval come from?
Val or Andy, or Andy, your client, can you address the process in which the conditional use permit would apply in this?
Well, I don't, I don't know what you're describing, Mr. Wilkie, as a conditional use area.
The zoning map of Norfolk outlines the area where the water tower is, that, that block of ground, as a CUP area.
Well, that, maybe there's a conditional use permit there for something, I don't know, but the zoning, the zoning does, the requirement, the zoning does not apply to the city or any government agency that has, that has certain provisions. So the, and there are other residential areas where towers have been permitted as well.
With CUPs.
But there is no requirement under state law for there to be a conditional use permit for the city of Norfolk to erect this tower. The land use regulations are not applicable.
According to the current zoning regulations available to the public, that, that is...
They are, they are not applicable to any government. As I said previously, there is a long line of Nebraska Supreme Court cases that say that they are not applicable.
And Clint, the reason for that would be to serve public safety purposes?
Well, the reason for that is that, that any time a political subdivision, or the state of Nebraska, has the right of eminent domain, they don't have, they don't have the, the zoning regulations are not applicable. When the counsel, when this counsel authorized the RFP process to place the structure on the, on, on the west side of Twenty-Fifth Street, I believe you were present and addressed that issue.
Yes, and I was opposed to it, and I did some more research.
You were opposed to it then, and...
And because of the research, I'm finding that the zoning, why does it not apply?
Because the Nebraska Supreme Court says that it doesn't apply, and there's a reason for that. The reason is, the same folks here that sit on this dais, the same elected officials that directed staff to go out and seek the bids to build the communications tower at the location selected, would be the same folks that would grant the conditional use permit. So the elected officials of the city of Norfolk have authorized the placement of the communication tower that Lyle was just talking about, at precisely the location where it's going to be built. And the Nebraska Supreme Court has declared that for those practical reasons, zoning is not applicable. It has no, it has nothing to do with the discussion about whatever the item is on the agenda about building the tower.
But that is not defined in the Norfolk City Code. It says that in District R-one, no building or structure shall be included in R-one except as provided in subsection seven twenty-seven four oh-one, which is a land use matrix. And under the land use matrix, a tower requires a CUP.
Except the zoning code that you're reading from is not applicable to the city of Norfolk, the Norfolk's public schools, the community college, the county, or any other of those, of those entities.
Mr. Wilkie, I think that the towers you're referring to would be private, would be owned by someone in the private sector.
So the city can...
Clint's making it state law supersedes, or is the final authority on this, and gives authority to public entities such as the city to cite these to serve purposes of public safety.
And, and that's correct, and this board, this body, this city council does not have the ability to change the state law.
So in essence, citizens really have no rights in terms of what is done with property in the city. If the city council, you, whoever decides that you want eminent domain on something, you just take it. Is that right? There was no public hearing on this at all. There was no public request for input on that location at all. It is not the right location for it. We've got a beautification committee that our mayor has established, and that's a wrong sighting for it. It's just not the right spot. And so that, that is my question, is why you would pick that location for that tower when you've got twelve acres north of, or eighteen, north of the country club out there in the middle of an alfalfa field, away from all residential, away from the highway? You could put all kinds of towers on it.
Mr. Wilkie, I believe you made the same argument back at the time when the discussion was going on, and at that time, public safety also addressed it as far as why this site was selected, and why this is the best site for it. Elevation-wise, it's considerably higher than the area that you're referencing, and so that would be, would add considerable expense to it, also the moves is, would cost us considerable more. So there are a lot of reasons for it, and no, your affirmation that, that we're able to take everything by eminent domain is inaccurate. We purchased that property at the time that, that the, that the street was being widened, and work was being done on it. That property was part of that project at that time, so that was not acquired underneath eminent domain. So the inaccuracies of your statements are, are there along with, as Clint noted, and as the mayor has noted, public bodies do not have to, and it's not unique to this city. I've worked over in Wayne for, where, for the college, they do not have to go by the zoning codes. The, the regional center out here does not have to, the veterans home does not have to. So it's not just the city taking things, so...
I understand that, but it's still zoned R-one, and it could be a beautiful residence sitting on that property, and not putting a tower, an ugly tower, they're not beautiful to look at. Prior mayor told you how many times that the public doesn't like those towers. We need them, but there, there's a point where you study the location of those. And you could put the same sized tower, basically the same elevation as what the hospital tower, one west of the hospital is sitting on, the Vero Tower, Tower. That's a tall tower. You could do the same thing on that point north of the country club. I just think enough thought had not been given into the location of that as a council, and that you just maybe were misguided by maybe some staff regarding that. And I, and I understand elevations, but it's not the right spot for it, to place something like that on that corridor in this city, just from a beautification standpoint, and from a property standpoint, for the property owners around there. And the property owners were not given a chance to even talk about that. That's my question. So I thank you for your time, and you can go down there.
Mr. Wilkie, one time, wasn't there a town hall meeting in here?
No, there was an informational meeting on, in the top, in the middle of November, informational only. It was not a public hearing on what was transpiring there. It was information where we were told what was gonna happen. We asked some questions, we were very cordial about it, but it was an informational meeting to say, this is what is going to happen. They didn't invite that, that whole subdivision in and say, folks, we need to talk about something that we're planning on doing. And that's my point. So...
We did have the informational meeting. We did invite, I recall, three-hundred foot radius like we would normally do on a public meeting in the planning commission, and our, our mayor and council. We had a good discussion that night. As I recall, I believe five people there in the neighborhood, aren't anymore were invited. We had a discussion, we tried to answer the questions to the best of our ability. At the end of the day, this site was researched very well. Our consultants looked at it, we looked at it, we know the site so well because it's right across the road from our current site, so the coverage map that we have for that site for our eight-hundred megahertz radio system that we're currently running is pretty spot-on, and we know it because we've been working it for twenty years. We get good in-building penetration from that site, we get good coverage for all of our communication ability. Not only that, our partners in public safety, State Patrol, County Sheriff, it's the north tower for the VHF system from Madison County, so they use that site as well, and will use a new site in the future as well. So when you break down all the facts and the reasons behind it, and the fact that we're gonna have great communications going for for public safety and for public works, it was, it was just an obvious thing for us.
Okay, thank you Shane, thank you, Mr. Wilkie.
Thank you, I just, I don't know whether the consultants were showing any other location except that one location.
Appreciate your engagement. I think we did have a, go ahead, Lyle, I think we did have a process, a solid process built into this in which we researched the, the location, and its applicability to multiple uses to serve public safety purposes throughout the community.
We had that meeting on November seventh at five-thirty PM, as Shane said, there was a few folks that attended it. One of the challenges associated with putting vital communication equipment onto non, public, non-government-owned property is, we want to make damn sure that the police, fire, and the local county law enforcement have the ability to talk when they need it most. Not too long ago, a couple months back, there was a private tower that collapsed down by Lincoln. Having all that communication equipment on city-owned property allows us to make one-hundred percent sure that the maintenance and the loading is all in compliance with what's, what's allowed, and not push the envelope that will come at the expense of the public safety and public works. Also, you'll note that it's just on the north side of that NPPD, NPPD substation, right there at Twenty-Fifth and Prospect. So it, it is, just like Clint said, another political subdivision right next to it. Any other questions?
Next one. Any other questions, counsel, discussion, question? If not, ask for your vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
It moves us to item number thirty-one, look for a motion to consider approval of an agreement for GIS services with JEO Consulting Group Incorporated for aligning the city GIS systems to industry best practices using the local government information model, otherwise known as LGM, for an amount of twenty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, Steve, will you give us some background on this, please?
Yep, Mayor and Council, before you hear is a proposal with, for professional services with JEO to update our GIS system to a, a more modern system. This here talks about the local government model, that is a geodatabase structured with all of the various attributes that a city uses, you know, off the, right now we have in-house our waters, our water, our sewer, and our storm sewer, mostly built in GIS, but it's just in the Esri's-based product. Not a lot of service there for us, other than it's functioning as a map. GIS is an extremely powerful tool, as you go out to other communities around the state, our size and larger, you'll start to see that they're putting a lot of interactive mapping products on their websites. Within, within my tenure here the last six months or so, as I'm sitting in meetings, a lot of the staff has outside products, to some extent GIS products, up on their websites, sometimes two, three, four different products. The ability really exists for us to implement our own GIS system, provide these tools internally, externally, and also provide interactive GIS mapping products out to our, to our public and our citizens as well. So we kind of started this conversation with, excuse me, with JEO, a little bit last... So, we kind of started this conversation with, excuse me, with JEO a little bit last, last September. We'd invited Mike Shaunleau in. Mike is the Douglas County and City of Omaha GIS Coordinator. He came in and shared a little bit of information with us on the local government model. There's hundreds of different modules that you can plug in right off the shelf to share data, a lot of mapping products. So it's, it's a great tool for us. If in the future, we decide to overlay some other products on top of that, they integrate right in with the local government model. So we're really setting ourselves up for today and for the future at the same time.
So Steve, if I hear you right, and this is implemented going forward, there's not a huge expense to expanding it?
There could be, yeah. It depends on how much we want to use it. Part of this process is going to be a, what's called a needs analysis. It'll involve sitting down with many of the divisions and multiple people within the divisions, just talking about the data they have, the data they're tracking, manhole flushing, I'm not exactly sure what's going over on it, police and fire and the different products that they're using, any, any kind of a database product. GIS graphic information systems is essentially a database. It's a database that you visually see the information that you put in there. So you can query it, you can report on it, you can overlay the data and, and query different, different sections of data with, you know, how much pressure do I have on a certain parcel area or a certain ward? How many streets do I need to repair across the city and ward? So it's, it just depends on how much we want to use it and how much we grow it. What I would say is, cities like Sioux Falls, South Dakota, they started their GIS system back in the early 90s. And as, as they build it based on water, sewer, storm sewer, and they start pushing out mapping products to the council, to the community, the demand for more just grows. And so there is certainly a possibility that, that we could grow beyond what this system is going to provide us right now. That growth just means how we're providing the underlying GIS or, or database service. So, today, we're doing it just based on our computer systems, a little bit out on what's called ArcGIS Online or the cloud. As we grow, we would probably have to look at an enterprise server, which would mean adding a server to our server rack, and that would be the majority of the future cost.
Well, I, I could have asked the question a little differently, I guess. It is, they are off-the-shelf plugins, so we don't necessarily need a person on staff that would write code, if you will, to implement anything else. We just buy it off the shelf and plug it in.
Right. We wouldn't necessarily need to be writing code for it. There is some, some work to plugging these modules in. We did hire, we did hire an individual last November to kind of function as our GIS person internally. Will have some costs to get them trained. They have a surveying background, which fits in very well. You'll usually see that surveying and GIS together. The, there's a gentleman here that's running, I can't remember exactly what it's called, but it's the state GIS organization. He's a land surveyor, which happens to be with JEO. But, pretty excited about what the product is, where the products can get us. And I think, you know, as I look at what we have and what we're using, we're a little bit behind, and I, I think this is going to go a long ways to get us where we need to be.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, the Norfolk Area Tree Board has looked into similar systems for documenting ash trees in the community for the eminent Emerald Ashbore Disease. Do you know if this system has that capability to-
It sure does. It does not have specifically the module. I, you know, some of the other products out there, I think there's a product called Treeworks and iTree. I was with an organization a few years ago where we implemented Treeworks. Had we known that iTree was available, I don't think we would have implemented Treeworks. I think i, you know, iTree would be something that could sit on here and still look at all of that data that's in there and, and push that out to the user. There are, we did talk to, when we brought JEO in last fall, we did ask specifically about trees. There's some other modules in there that could easily do that with a little bit of tweaking.
Good question. In general, the system could map the tree canopy throughout the clarity of the use by park services to locate where plantings need to be focused or replacements. Okay. Would you refer to say, Steve, in general, that it's a data system that can build upon itself to-
Yes.
Provide improved services?
It is, you know, this is, I'm pretty sure this is what the city of, city of Omaha is sitting on, is, is the local government model. And that, that is their foundation or their basis. They have other custom, you know, they're, they're doing some plugin, and they're also doing some custom programming on top of that database.
Any other questions? Discussion?
I want, as we lay, as we lay this, I don't know if there's a schedule in there on this, but I, I said to JEO, I want this something active, online to the public by the first of July, because I want to be able to show councils as we go into meetings. So, soon.
Thanks, Steve. If there's no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present, voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
On 32, I'd look for a motion to consider approval of a letter agreement for professional engineering services with Olson Associates for the Northeast Industrial Water Main Project for an amount of $27,480.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Again, Steve.
Yes, both items, I'll talk a little bit to both items, 32 and 33. These both deal with the water service out to the Northeast Industrial Park area. That would be the area out to and including Norfolk Iron and Metal, New Core, the ethanol plant, that general industrial park area out there, both south and north of Industrial Road. I believe there is a map included in there that shows the Phase 1 study area, Phase 2 study area. Phase 1 is really the focus. Phase 2 is kind of taking our best look at what the future might look like in terms of getting a loop back into the city. This is going to set up another pressure zone for the city up in that area. JEO, excuse me, Olson's is going to be doing the engineering end of it in terms of routing, profile design. Black and Beach, which is item 32, they're going to be doing the heavy lifting on the hydraulic modeling for whatever we would look at, out in that area. We've engaged both of them in conversation, obviously, to get to the point here of having these contracts in front of you tonight. Both of these, we're going to call Phase 1. We intend to come back for Phase 2, which would be a development of our 10-year master water plan at the end of this.
Okay. All in preparation for better serving our major industrial partners in that area and potentially accommodating for their development there.
Correct. Trying to get something a little closer to shovel-ready.
Yeah. Any other, any questions for Steve on that, or discussion? Okay, if none, please vote.
All council members present, voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
And item 33, for, look for a motion to consider approval of a consulting services agreement with Black and Beach to perform water system planning services in correlation with the Northeast Industrial 16-inch, 20-inch slash 20-inch water main project for an amount of $44,910.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. Anything to add there, Steve, on this?
No, I don't, but I'll take any questions you have. We've used Black and Beach for many years for kind of our heavy water modeling. They did, they were involved back in 2008, 2010 in our master plan back then, as well as some of the prior modeling that was done as a function of this Northeast Industrial Water Main.
Very good. Any other discussion, council? Seeing none, please vote.
All council members present, voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 34, I'd look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5531 amending the fee schedule in section 2-5 of the code to clarify descriptions for building permit fees, plumbing permit fees, and fire alarm installer contractor fees, to update tire disposal fees, and to update individual sewage system construction permit fees.
I'll move for consideration ordinance number 5531.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay. And Clint, would you do the honors of explaining this to us, please?
The, the changes that are made here are, just because in the short title, I think there's other staff here that can address the particular changes probably better than, than I can, but those were the ones that we will request to make, if there was, that are present here.
Okay. Trent, okay. Trent can clarify for us a little bit on this?
Mayor, council. This here, for all of my stuff, I know there's some other changes in there that don't deal with me, but all my stuff is clarifications. And one, we reduced the fee on private sewage systems. So, we used to go out and inspect all septic systems, record them, inspect them. That's a state entity now. The state inspects all the, the private sewage systems out in the two-mile or wherever. So, that, actually, we decreased because we felt it's too high for what we're doing. We're going out, we're recording it, but the actual bleach fields, the laterals, and the testing, all that stuff with soils, we're not doing that no more. So, we reduced that. The rest of it was all housekeeping. I use that term loosely, but it's all language changes. There's no fee increases or anything permit-wise as of yet. I think in the future, there will be some changes probably coming. They're going to be minor, like 5%. Fees have not changed, building permit fees, any of that stuff have not changed for probably 20-plus years at least. They've always been the same since I've been here, so, and I could get more data on that if you wanted, but that discussion will be, talking with you later on, for sure, probably subcommittee, for sure.
So that's not done here? This is cleaning-
Yeah, no, this is just language. This is just language. What we did is this made it a little bit cleaner to find in 2-5, and I didn't print off all the 2-5. It's, how many pages is 2-5, Beth? Like 30, 40, I don't know. So I didn't print all them off, just saved some paper, but just very minor changes. Any questions? Thank you.
So the media picked that up, we're decreasing a fee. Happened a lot. Very good. Any other questions or comments, council, on this? Okay. Seeing none, short title, please, Beth.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend section 2-5 of the official city code to clarify descriptions for building permit fees, plumbing permit fees, and fire alarm installer contractor fees, to update tire disposal fees, to update individual sewage system connection, construction permit fees, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present, voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5531 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, this is a- One of a housekeeping function, I would suggest we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5531 on second and third.
Second.
Okay, motion second, suspend the rules. Any further discussion? If none, please vote.
All council members present, voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5531 carries on second and third.
Okay, last but not least, item number 35, we do open up quarterly, right back to the public comment period, where anyone from the public can come forward and talk about pretty much anything they want. Mr. Welkey? Let me guess.
Your Honor, I, I'm going to end this on a more pleasurable note, I think, and I, I want to take this opportunity to let you all know how much I appreciate this man seated right over here. Steve is, is number one, as a city employee, he takes, he takes calls. Number two, he returns calls. And number three, he responds. And I, I really want to thank you. I've had occasion a couple times here in the last several months to have conversation with Steve, and he's very personable, and you got a good man in the right position. So, thank you, Steve, and thank you all.
Appreciate that input. Thank you, Mr. Welkey. Thank you, Steve. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, that concludes this meeting of the Norfolk City Council.